Welcome to the Winchester Select Board Meeting of October 18th, 2021. I'm Susan Verdicchio. I serve as Chair. I'm joined by my colleagues Mariano Gulliboff, Rich Mucci, and Mike Bettencourt. Also joined by Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph. And I guess everyone is all tuned in. And so why don't we get started? Just got a very full agenda, and I just wanted to note our meetings coming up. The next regular session will be Monday, October 25th, in one week. We will then have very short meetings right before the evening sessions of Winchester Town Meeting. That's on Monday, November 1st, and Thursday, November 4th, Monday, the 8th, and Thursday, the 15th, skipping Veterans Day. Those will be very short meetings, half an hour. And then potentially, if Town Meeting does not go into November 18th, then we will try to have a regular session then. So I don't have a Chair Report. I don't think there are any committee updates. So why don't we go straight into the donations, please?
I move that we accept a donation of $3,600 from Winchester Hospital to the Health Department to provide PCR COVID testing for Winchester residents, non-residents working in town and town employees at no charge. With thanks from the Board to the Winchester Hospital.
That's great. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rich. Roll call, vote. Mike? Well, let's start with Mariano.
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike? I might be walking the dog. So I vote yes as well.
Okay, I move that we accept donations in the amount of $850 to the Council on Aging for appreciation of services. With thanks to the donors.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike? Okay. I vote yes as well. The third one?
I move that we accept assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $104,081.54 from FEMA to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then Town Manager's report. Beth, are you ready?
Ready. Yeah, I'll share my screen quickly. Patty, do you mind enabling it for me? All right. So update to the Select Board for tonight's meeting. The first two items are agenda items. I will cover those. Just briefly, mention Fall Town Meeting starts November 1st. Just want to highlight the time, 7:00 PM start, which is earlier than normal. Most of the books are being mailed this week to Town Meeting members, and I just wanted to highlight that the Town Manager's hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, October 27th at 6:00 PM via remote participation. The bulk of tonight's meeting will be to discuss the Town Meeting warrant and have the Board vote on the final motions for you all. So this, I'll skip through this for now. Just want to highlight for two specific things. This was an error in the memo. When we get to Article 26 and Article 23, we just want to have a quick conversation with the Board on those items. There's a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee on Wednesday, October 20th at 5:00 PM. That is via remote participation. We are scheduled to have our first budget summit this Friday morning at 8:30 AM with members of the Select Board, FinCom, School Committee, and Senior Staff, Senior Management. Some construction updates. So since our last meeting, we have postponed construction of the Turk Street at Waterfield Road intersection project until the spring due to some concerns, valid concerns raised by the business community about impacts to the holiday season. Construction at Swanton Bridge is ongoing. They've made some progress with setting the bridge abutment pieces, so there's some good progress to report there. We've opened bids for the North Reservoir spillway project early this month, and the work is within budget, so we'll be awarding the contract. Our source is completed installation of the Mark Manhole on Washington Street near Enter Circle. They've had some trouble removing their supportive excavation. So if you've gone through there, you've seen the road's kind of a mess at this point. So they're going to be working on removing that through the end of this week. Moraga School boilers are set to arrive on site next Tuesday, and installation will start shortly thereafter. So that's one of the projects that was funded by the override earlier this year. At least one boiler or two boilers will be operational at all times, so that heat to the building will not be interrupted by the construction. And then finally, finally, there are interviews tomorrow morning to review the shortlisted architectural firms for the Lake School feasibility study, and we expect to have a team under contract in early November. Quick personnel issues. So since we last met, we've welcomed both our new H-hour Director, Mike Town, and our Sustainability Director, Kim Pruitt, to our town staff. Happy to have them here. COVID updates. The Board of Health is continuing to hold weekly COVID testing in Town Hall. Check the town's website for more information on that. And then importantly, the Board of Health is also holding their flu clinic. So the next session is scheduled for this Wednesday, and then a couple additional sessions on October 25th and November 16th for the general public. There's also, the school flu clinics have also, I believe, already been held at this point. And then finally, just a couple quick community events. There's a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Branch All Boy, which opened earlier this year in the Town Center on Thompson Street. The Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a Halloween house decorating contest through the end of October. And the Recreation Department opened up registration for the Halloween window painting program, which is always a very special time for folks in the Town Center. Happy to take any questions that you have on any of these matters. Thanks.
Does anyone on the Board have a question for Beth on any of these things? Or any announcements? Okay, I'll say none. I think I see all of the members of the Waterfield Task Force who are up to on the agenda today to give their report. And those folks have already spent a lot of time on the meetings of the Task Force itself, so I wanted to not make them wait. But why don't we go ahead with that? Waterfield Lot Task Force, I welcome, let's see, who's here? Pat Fortin and Sumya Ganapathy and Stephanie Zaramba. Who am I forgetting?
Paul Manginaro, wasn't he? I don't believe he was.
Right, Paul was not able to attend. All right.
Bill Cummings.
I don't see Bill Cummings. We are a little bit ahead of time. I think I said 7:45. So why don't we do this? I suspect there's some people here for a public comment. We do have a very full agenda, but I think we have time for a five-minute public comment session. If anyone wishes to speak on any topic within the purview of the Select Board, now would be the time. It's time for public comment. I would, what do I usually say? You know, try to keep your comments brief, so more people will have a chance to make their comments as well. It's not necessarily a dialogue with the Board. It's just a chance for you to make a comment. And if you are here on behalf of a group of people, or you have the same issue, please appoint a spokesperson to speak for the whole group. Is anyone here for public comment? You can just raise your Zoom hand if you wish to speak. And maybe no one does wish to speak. Saying done, I will call that. And why don't we get into the report from the Waterfield Lot Task Force?
Sure. So Susan, I have a brief presentation. I thought I would just kind of give everybody a general overview, and then we would allow members of the Task Force that are here a few minutes to speak. If that's okay. Happy to share that presentation. All right, can everybody see that? Okay?
I can, yeah.
So first, I just want to start out by thanking members of the Task Force and members of Town Staff, Brian Zakely and Patty here from the Town Manager's Office, who have spent a tremendous amount of time, both in meetings regarding this project, this Task Force, and reviewing materials outside of it. So it's been a huge undertaking for everybody who participated, and I just want to thank the dedication of those volunteers for the amount of time that they spent coming to these recommendations to bring forth to the Board. So thank you for that. The Select Board appointed a five-member Waterfield Task Force on July 12th to review the issues and concerns related to the redevelopment of the Waterfield Lot, which is located near the MBTH train station and the Town Common. The members were Stephanie Zaramba, Sumya Ganapathy, Bill Cummings, Pat Fortin, and Paul Manginaro. The Task Force met eight times over the past several months, including a one-hour public comment period, which was held at their meeting on September 13th. There was also a variety of comments that were submitted, both to the Task Force and to the Select Board in writing during that period. One of the items that the Task Force was asked to look at was to develop a set of priority rankings for these six items listed here. So availability of public parking, design, length of ground lease, town oversight, affordable/market rate mix, and revenue to the town. So each member of the Task Force ranked these items individually, with six being the highest rank and one being the lowest rank. And then we added up those scores cumulatively, and the top three items that ranked were, one, the availability of public parking, two, the mix of affordable and market rate housing units, and three, revenue to the town as the top three priorities. These rankings are contained in the report that the Task Force produced. Next, the Task Force voted at their meeting on October 8th, I believe, to issue five independent reports from each board member in terms of the findings and recommendations. However, the group took a series of votes at their meeting last week with some overarching recommendations. And so I'm just going to quickly run through what those votes are, and then we can turn it over to each member of the committee to find their public comments. So the first motion was, should the town should terminate negotiations with Civicco and reissue the RFP to current pre-qualified bidders? That motion passed a three-to-two vote. The second motion was, if the RFP is reissued, the town should make the new priorities as revenue, affordable housing, and parking all equally ranked as evaluation criterion, but keep all other criteria weights the same as the previous RFP, subject to other recommendations of the Task Force. That motion also carried with a three-to vote. Then they made a series of recommendations, regardless of whether the Select Board elects to reissue the RFP or renegotiate with Civicco. And they should evaluate these following scenarios. The first vote was, the town should encourage a developer to consider increasing over Civicco's building height up to 60 feet to allow for additional affordable and market rate units, and that passed with a four-to-one margin. The town should evaluate and/or encourage a developer to determine options for removal of the Chamber of Commerce building to allow for creation of additional housing units and/or parking spaces. That was a unanimous vote in the affirmative. The town should evaluate ways to decrease the loss of public parking on the Waterfield Lot site, including through the investigation of off-site parking creation. Again, was a unanimous vote. The town should encourage a developer to consider removal of retail/commercial spaces from the proposed redevelopment if it allows for more housing units and maintains or improves the economics of the proposal, rental income and taxes, et cetera. That was a unanimous vote. The town should allow a developer to change the 80% AMI units to 60% AMI units to provide additional financial resources for the town. That was voted unanimously. The town should consider ground lease terms for less than 99 years. Again, unanimous. For any development on the Waterfield site, the town should strive for the current proposed affordability levels at 66%, but not go lower than 50%. That was unanimous. The affordable units should cover a range of affordability, covering 30% to 80% AMI, both to maximize affordability and to best leverage subsidies and tax credits in order to maximize the economics of the development. This is to prevent a building of all 80% AMI units. That was a unanimous vote. To continue to consider sustainability and climate change as an important design feature of the selection criteria using a potentially all-electric building on the site. That was a unanimous vote. That was the final vote taken. So Susan, at this time, I think each individual Task Force member wanted to make a statement. Paul Manginaro was not able to attend, so I have a statement I can read on his behalf. Would you like to move that first?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
So again, this is Select Board comments for October 18th, 2020, from Paul Manginaro, Waterfield Task Force member. And actually, let me stop my share. Maybe Patty can share his comments on the screen. Thank you for allowing me to submit my comments. I am sorry I cannot be present to do so, as I have a prior commitment. I must attend to. As you are aware, the five-member Waterfield Task Force has completed a very thorough process that included a review of the original Civicco proposal with inputs from residents, town officials, a financial advisor, local business owners, and shoppers. You are asked to rank six criteria as they relate to the project, as well as provide our individual reports. You should all have, you should all have this information in hand by now. The Task Force rankings clearly show that the top three priorities related to the Waterfield project are availability of public parking, affordable/market rate mix, and revenue to the town. The majority of the Waterfield Task Force also voted three-to-two favorable to recommend the following two major motions. First being, should the town terminate negotiations with Civicco and reissue the RFP? The second was, if the RFP is reissued, should revenue to the town as an evaluation criteria be added? These findings, along with the results of the June 2021 special election vote in which the majority of Winchester residents said no to the previous Waterfield deal, sent a clear message, in my opinion. The message is that the Waterfield project RFP should be redone with the top three criteria factors included at equal lengths, and the project needs to be rebid. This will assure that Winchester gets the best deal, and we can start to build the faith and trust of all Winchester residents in the process of our elected, in the process and our elected leaders. There's a great opportunity here and one that should not be taken lightly. The Task Force was made up of a very diverse group of interests, experience, and goals. It was a shining example of how far, how a fair and flexible group of citizens can come together through compromise for the betterment of all. Sincerely, Paul Manginaro, Waterfield Task Force member. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, for reading that. I'm not sure, but I believe Pat Fortin has a statement as well that he would like to.
Yeah, I saw him on here a minute ago, so I didn't know if he's still here, if I should read his comments as well.
Yes, that you read them.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Patty. So I'll go ahead and read his comments next. Dear Select Board members, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, I would like to share a few thoughts instead of my proposed two minutes of presentation at the meeting. I respectfully request this memo acts as my comments and ideally is right into the record. I was interested but nervous to be part of the Select Board's Waterfield Task Force. I am not politically active and prefer to help the town in quiet, non-political areas. I think we would all agree that the Waterfield development is definitely not a quiet or non-political area. The town majority vote to stop the project was an unusual and powerful statement that the residents of Winchester were not satisfied with the project as it had been presented. I am sure that you have seen my report, so I will not re-present it. I do want to highlight that there were major flaws in the original Waterfield project. I do believe the town resident, believe the town residents' no vote was primarily focused on two major areas. I also believe that a new RFP is the only solution to assure the town's residents that the best Waterfield project has been selected. The Task Force was united on supporting the affordable housing criteria and the original proposal. The group was also united in maintaining affordable housing as a priority on Waterfield Lot. There were two additional priorities that were approved at a similar ranking level to be included in the new RFP. For what seems like forever, parking in the downtown has been a highly focused concern, not only for our Town Center's vibrant city, but also for its survival. A recent survey of customers and clients of our center's merchants shows a very strong sentiment that Winchester already has parking issues. 71% of surveyed customers said that due to parking constraints, they often or sometimes, quote, "shop, dine, run errands outside of Winchester." In a different survey, 77 of our retail downtown business responded yes when asked, quote, "Have your customers complained to you about the availability to find parking spaces to shop in your store?" Even the recent rapid recovery plan from DHCD repeatedly mentions that 50% of businesses involved in their study found parking as a barrier and requested that, quote, "Parking availability should be increased." Although Civicco presented the most public parking, it is not a good outcome. Placing 93 public spaces with 40 spaces is a regression in an already insufficient parking inventory. Priority given parking as part of the original RFP was clearly, was clearly underweighted. I was happy to see that the Task Force voted in favor of making parking a number-one priority, along with revenue and affordable housing. A new RFP with parking as a priority will allow developers to revisit public parking as a top priority in the project. The rejected original RFP never mentions revenue as criteria for developers. Ultimately, Town Meeting has the power to determine what revenue it expects from the Waterfield project. But the original RFP not only never asked developers to include revenue in its proposal, but it never gave developers the flexibility to look for additional revenue. Additionally, the Task Force has many unanswered questions related to revenue, especially related to forecasting and projections. I believe the town residents voted no, requesting to see a much deeper and more transparent review of revenue. The Task Force voted unanimously to consider a Waterfield land lease of less than 99 years. This would involve additional financial review and make a dramatic change to the new RFP. The Task Force approved motion to make revenue a top priority and criteria shows that the committee agreed with the town residents' concerns. The Task Force had many ideas and much discussion on ways to make a new RFP more flexible, so developers could be more creative in their proposals. The town was very fortunate to have Bill Cummings, founder of Cummings Properties, on the Task Force, and his input and ideas were very eye-opening. Many of these ideas are listed in the individual reports and should help the Select Board craft a more flexible RFP to ensure the town of the best possible solution for the Waterfield Lot. Ultimately, the Task Force majority vote to issue a new RFP is the best solution for all of the town's diverse interests. It will also go a long way to a redesigned Waterfield project. The entire town can support. Thank you, Patrick J. Fordham.
Thanks for reading all of that.
You're welcome.
And I want to, you know, echo what you said and let all of the Task Force members know how much we appreciate all of their time and effort and their patience and open-mindedness to grapple with all the complexities of this project and the complexities of the state funding. I think that I went to a few of the Zoom sessions, and I learned a lot. And it was very evident that everybody was working very hard, and I think it was a great effort. We certainly appreciate that. So if Sumya would like to make a statement herself?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dear Select Board, thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Waterfield Task Force. Upon review of the documents given to the Task Force, as well as the assessment of the information from LDS, I do feel that this is a good deal for the town and recommend renegotiating with Civicco with the recommendations submitted to the Task Force about parking revenue to the town, as well as other details. I do believe that we have better bargaining power to renegotiate with Civicco rather than start a new RFP. In addition to increasing the town's very low affordable housing stock, I do believe this to be a fair deal to the town. The town will receive over $7 million in revenue in the form of property taxes, rents, and a parking structure. Currently, the town is not getting any revenue from this property. If we want to control our destiny, we need to take control of affordable housing. Our safe harbor provision is going to run out, and when it does, we won't have the luxury of having this conversation. I truly believe this is a good project for the town. It allows 60 families to move to the downtown area, shop local businesses, and eat at our local downtown restaurants. Lastly, I also strongly recommend that the town emphasize green building standards aiming towards carbon neutrality or carbon negativity in the construction and the design of the project. I also want to thank the other members of the Task Force and all the town staff that made this Task Force possible. Thank you for the privilege for working on this Task Force.
Thank you. And Stephanie Zaramba is here, I believe, as well.
Thank you, Chair Verdicchio, and members of the Select Board. I want to echo the thanks for giving me the opportunity to be on the Task Force and highlight a few things in addition to my section of the report. The extremely close results of the June special election showed that our town was deeply divided. The facts of the issue are complicated, and many voters went to the polls based on statements like that the town was giving away the Waterfield Lot for $5,000,000 or that the deal was a hidden override, statements that unfortunately did not have the benefit of being true. The Select Board was very wise to convene this Task Force, and it should have been an opportunity for us to find common ground around the facts and raw numbers of the proposal. And we did have some success there. We did make some unanimous recommendations in our report, and those do warrant the Select Board's attention. Unfortunately, we did not, as a Task Force, make any shared findings. So once again, the facts remain elusive in this process. So I'd ask that the Select Board question recommendations, for which there are no associated findings of fact, such as the recommendation to look at changes to a building height, the removal of the commercial space, or issuing a new RFP. While those might be good ideas, the Task Force did not study the implications of any of these recommendations. And so you cannot take statements like, a new RFP is the only solution, as being backed by any degree of fact. Those statements are not. Those are opinions of certain Task Force members and may not represent any fact that we found or any consensus we came to. I'd also caution that what certain Task Force members have said that they want was clearly stated by the experts we heard from is not possible. We cannot create more parking than Civicco provided, generate additional revenue for the town, and keep the affordability levels the same. We could allow for at least less than 99 years, and I'm open to that, but it's very likely to not be feasible. So it's likely a moot point. Certain members voted to gloss over the facts of our work, and then fortunately, it was to the detriment of our work product. And so I apologize that you asked us to make findings and recommendations, and you didn't get much in the findings column. Lastly, and I'll finish it quickly here, let's be very clear on what the special election did and did not do. It made the LDA with Civicco not effective. It did not stop the deal. It did not call for the deal to be entirely redone. The language on the ballot was pretty clear there. The town now has an opportunity to negotiate further, and that may prove to be a great thing, but the vote didn't undo three years of the due process of our local government. Voters have an obligation to pay attention. They cannot argue that the referendum is a town-wide mandate to start this process again, wasting three years of work and expense. The RFP was duly debated by multiple town committees authorized by Town Meeting, all open to the public. Our government literally cannot function if we set the precedent that decisions from years ago can be stopped dead in their tracks whenever a subset of voters decide they would have done it differently had they participated at the time. Voters have, and have exercised here, an important referendum right for recent Town Meeting decisions. It's not a referendum on decisions from over a year or more ago. So the Select Board members, you have a hard job. You now must decide what's required next, whether a new RFP is required or appropriate. I'm not opining on that. That question was outside of the scope that you gave to the Task Force, and we made no findings of fact on that. So I'd urge you to take that big, hard decision based on what's best for the town, and in particular, what's best for the future of affordable housing in Winchester. Thanks.
Thank you. So with that, since we do have some of the members of the Task Force here, I hope they don't, wouldn't, you guys wouldn't mind if the Select Board had a couple of questions? I don't, I don't really know.
Happy to.
But if anybody has any questions, anybody on the Board? if anybody has any questions, anybody on the board would like to pose anything, please go ahead. Please raise, you could raise your hand, I guess. I'll try to keep an eye out for all of the hand raising, but Mike, it looks like you have your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Susan. I, I don't have a question yet. I've been viewing the reports and attending the, the meetings and I just really want to extend my appreciation to the members of the task force. This has been a ton of work and a ton of time and I appreciate the level and intensity that you've applied to it. I know it's hard to, to fit all of this in, but it's going to benefit the town in the long run. It really does give us a roadmap, I, I, I think, to, to move forward for a great outcome for the community. So, um, thank you again. I, I know the process of going to town meeting and then have a referendum and creating a task force and then coming back from negotiations has been an arduous one and it's, it's been an anxious one, but I appreciate you sticking with us. It's certainly been a great benefit to the residents of Winchester. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I agree. That's been a ton of work and I think it's been a very valuable exercise. I think it does give us a lot of input.
Susan, I don't have any questions. I want to thank all the members and I think the reports were all comprehensive enough that they, they don't really leave any questions for me. I think, you know, we need to discuss as a board how we move forward and, and, and I have a lot of comments on that, but I, I don't have any questions for the members of the task board other than just to thank them for all the, the work that they put into it.
Thanks, Mariano. Rich?
Thank you, Susan. I do want to join my colleagues in thanking the, the task force for all their time on this project. It was a truncated charge and a truncated time period for them to do this. And, you know, over the last six or so weeks, they've met diligently and have had spirited debate, which, you know, frankly is, is a part of democracy, right? To have spirited debate, you're not always going to agree. But, you know, from disagreement comes consensus. So I thought, you know, there were a lot of good dialogues and, and answers to a lot of questions. I actually do have a couple of questions tonight, if I could ask a couple of questions. So to Stephanie, you just mentioned that these votes, that some of these are based on opinion. Basically, you didn't, you didn't bet them on, and, and come up with facts, factual findings such as, you know, changing the height of the building and some of these votes that you took. Do you feel you need more time to do that? And, and would that be beneficial? And it could be for both of you. I appreciate you both joining us live.
Yeah, um, thanks, Rich. I think that that's an option, right? I would be happy to continue the process and be able to spend a little bit more time on those questions. I think the Select Board also could do the same. My point was really just that we didn't delve into input from neighbors, for example, during the RFP process or really have any basis to say that raising the building height would be acceptable to the surrounding businesses and neighbors. I think a lot of that data does exist. I think, Beth, you know, you probably have some of that in the town manager's materials, but we glossed through design really quickly. And if that's going to be considered, someone needs to spend a little more time on that, whether it's us or you or Tom's staff.
Thank you. I don't see the other members here. So I know Stephanie, you voted against the, raising the height. But I did want to ask, the motion said to raise the height up to sixty feet to allow for additional affordable and market rate units. I was wondering how you would feel if the height was raised and if this came up in your discussions. And I did watch the tapes of most meetings. I did attend the last meeting. How would you feel about if, if height was raised, you know, in order to accommodate additional parking? Would that be something that you thought would be beneficial?
So, yeah, I see your hand. Why don't you go ahead first?
Uh, yeah, uh, about that motion, it, there was another motion getting recommendations from neighbors as well as the planning board. And, and, and I think that would be very valuable to have. I did vote in the affirmative to raise the height, but I thought there was going to be a second motion, getting the guidance of neighbors and the planning board. And I think that'd be really important because they'd be directly impacted and the planning board obviously has done a lot of work.
But we, so me and I probably had an unintentional miscommunication during that. I had made a separate motion to, to get opinions. And then when it was part of one, I withdrew my motion because my colleagues had already kind of opined that they would raise the height. And so maybe there was a miscommunication there. I, I think, and I said at the time, I'm potentially okay with that, but I don't live there and a lot of people do. And I wasn't prepared to say yes to the height without knowing how they feel.
Thanks. Am I, I guess my final question, this came up a couple of times during your discussions with various members, but I guess having you both here, I'll ask you, you know, the loss of open space, if it was to help, you know, relieve the parking issue that you all have identified, you know, what, what would be your thoughts on that?
I don't love it. There was a comment made by one of the task force members that perhaps this building would house a lot of older citizens looking to downsize and kind of like they don't need the open space. There have to be two and three bedroom units was one of the things we learned and as a, you know, I have a young kid and I, I don't think we want to reduce the open space too much. I think that's a valuable part of the design. And yes, you do have the town common right across, but that's, that's not right there and it's a valuable amenity to the development, I think.
I would agree with having open space as well. We want to make a building in a space that is nice to live in. And I think open space is a important envelopment, element of any design.
Thank you. Mariano, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I do have a question since so much has gone around parking. Did, did you have a chance as a task force to look at the last parking study that the town did that shows that at the peak time of parking usage, forty-seven percent of all parking spots in the Central Business District are vacant?
Not added. Neither the Chambers survey nor that were actually presented to us in terms of any finding that we could discuss.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't see any findings on, on like actual parking spaces, like any factual statement on, on the availability of parking. So, thank you.
I, I do recall at one of the meetings, it was mentioned that we have an addition of seventy-six parking spaces now, which we didn't have, and it was due to them being switched from long-term to short-term parking.
Thank you.
Mariano, you referring to the 2010 parking study?
Yeah.
I have no further questions, but thank you both for joining us live. Sorry. You know, and appreciate all your hard work on the task force. So thank you.
Thank you, Rich. You know, I, I went through some of the reports and, and there, there's just so much there. I really feel like I need to digest. And I, I don't, I don't really have any questions at the moment either. I do think that there was a lot of good thinking and a lot of good suggestions that come out in all the different reports and really does give us, as Mike says, a lot to go on and a, and a good roadmap to work through. Beth, do you have any, anything to add? That, you know, you were at these, some of these as well, if you want.
No, I, I don't at this point. I, I just failed to mention before, but we did have the services of Lynn Sweet from LDS Consulting available to the task force to look at the financial pieces of Civicco's proposal. So, so, um, that she prepared, have some good information to the board. And she, I did check with her. She'd be available to come to your meeting next week if you do have questions specifically for her on any of that information.
Good, that's great. I, I did learn a lot from her presentations and her namos. A lot more than I think any of us had going into the initial decision-making. So it was really good to have her on board and also I really think that Marty Jones made a great contribution as well. So we've got a lot of good in-house expertise and a lot of good ideas and good suggestions to move forward and to discuss on the twenty-fifth.
Thanks, Stephanie, as are Henry's.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is, is it okay if I make one more quick comment?
Yeah, sure.
I just wanted to say that Lynn of LDS Consulting was a great resource. She endured a lot and sometimes some challenges, I think, but she did a wonderful job. I would encourage the Select Board to take her up on any offers of additional resources. I think there's more in her numbers to dig into that maybe we didn't all the way. And also just to say that I think I can speak for all five of us in saying we're happy to be available for follow-up if you have questions later on.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will take this up again in our next meeting and deliberate and make some decisions. And again, thanks, many, many thanks to the task force.
Thank you.
So why don't we move on to the next topic, which is our outdoor dining situation? Beth, you want to, kind of give us the rundown of where we stand?
Sure. So the Select Board this spring approved outdoor dining applications for six restaurants, China Sky, First House Pub, Black Horse Tavern, Tabula, Lucia's, and Swan Street Diner. There were license agreements that were signed, I believe, by each of those restaurants and the, the license agreements have that the outdoor dining is set to expire on October thirty-first. So I believe the conversation is for the board to, to either continue with that deadline or discuss a potential extension. We did get requests today from Lucia's regarding a potential extension into November.
Uh, but before we get completely into that, while we have you, Beth, I believe the town normally has a deadline for street opening permits because of potential snow. What, can you remind me what that is?
Sure, yeah. So we have what's called a street opening moratorium starting November fifteenth. So typically, DBW does not allow any new construction in the roadway after that date due to the potential for snow impacts at that point.
Right, okay, thanks. I think I saw someone with their hand up, a member of the, yeah, is that Mike? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Susan. I, I think last year maybe we extended the outdoor dining to December and, you know, I'd be willing to do that again, subject to, you know, DBW oversight if we know that there's Northeastern coming and, you know, they need to have access to the roads and that, I think that that's the big issue. I think the restaurants also need time to remove all of their outdoor dining infrastructure, which in a good way seems to be growing and improving, you know, over time. So the more, the more they have time to make that decision, I think, you know, that last year, even though we extended the time, some of them kind of closed it down a little bit early. So we can work with them, but I think we need to signal our support for extending it really as long as the, the elements will allow.
Yeah, I, I agree. What are we allowed to extend it to? I think there's, I think right now we're operating under emergency authorization, right? So, because the bylaw says October thirty-first, but my, my understanding is that we are under emergency authorization by the state. So is there a deadline there?
I think that's true. And Mina is here. Mina, can you weigh in on that?
Mariano, I, I would have to double check, but I don't believe that the, I believe, you're right, the state authorization is, is continuing. And I don't think it has a particular deadline. Some towns have, have set different ones, Boston, for instance, has. But if you were back to your bylaw, you're right, it'll be October thirty. Thirty-first, obviously, sorry. Ignoring Halloween.
Thirty, thirty days.
I, I absolutely agree that we should, or we should extend it. I mean, I think with the, the weather is, is clearly a lot more temperate right now than, than usually at this time of year. So any amount of time that allows for the town center to be more vibrant. We know that having the outdoor dining brings more people to the town center and benefits all of the, all of the businesses there by having more foot traffic. So I'd be okay with whatever date with, you know, the caveat that if there is a Northeastern coming and DPW needs, needs to have more space to move the snow, then the restaurants will work with, with the town.
I would just be a little cautious because several of the installations are pretty significant and will require some, you know, several days lead time in order to be able to mobilize equipment to remove that. So I might factor that into your, the, the end date that you guys consider.
So if I could, I'd support extending to November fourteenth, through November fourteenth, that Sunday. I think anything after that, we're going to get into the holiday shopping season and this is a particularly difficult holiday season for a lot of our local merchants between supply chain issues and potential parking issues. People are already starting to shop early and, you know, I think I've heard from a lot of retailers repeatedly asking when this is, when, when outdoor dining will be, will be over. I also think after, you know, the middle of November, there isn't really an appetite for, for many people to, to sit outside at night, which is when these are the most populated. So, you know, my position is, you know, middle of November, I think, is acceptable. Anything after that, I think, you know, we really need to, to give our retailers back, you know, the prime parking spots that they, so they have them available for, for the shopping season. In addition, Beth, I didn't know if there was any update on the MBTA project in terms of when they'll be coming to, to try to to take their, their parking spaces back.
Sure, yeah. So Mark and I actually had a call with them on Friday. They have not, they have not awarded a contract yet. They expect to be able to do that in the next few weeks, once their board directors meets again. They didn't have, obviously, they don't have a start date for the contractor. They did expect them to be mobilizing prior to the end of the calendar year. And we did impress upon them that if they, you know, we understand that they have work to do out there, but we don't want them just going out there and, you know, taking parking spaces for two weeks and not doing any other work. Like that should, that should not be their first order of business and then, you know, to go away through the holiday season. So we should have more information probably within the next month or so as we, you know, as, as we, as they issue that contract and we can have a pre-construction meeting with them and their contract.
I'll also remind the board that we, we ended up opening up and allowing outdoor dining earlier than it, than we originally anticipated. We pushed it to this St. Patrick's Day weekend. So, you know, I, I just think, you know, it's been since the middle of March that some of these outdoor dining establishments have been open and, and it's been a great success. And, and, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's worked for everyone. I just think at this point, most of our retailers make all their money this holiday season. And they, they need all the advantages they can have. You know, I was talking to one retailer the other day who told me, you know, and I would consider it an anchor store downtown, that, you know, they operated a negative the first, the other three quarters of, of the year. So, you know, if we want to support our retail businesses, I think we have to yield those parking spots back up. So, you know, if we want to support our retail businesses, I think we have to yield those parking spots back up.
I'm fine with that. I, I don't think the data agrees with that, that, I mean, those parking spots don't yield more business for the retailers when they're open. They yield more business for the retailers when they attract people to the town center. Unfortunately, for, for local retailers, the reality is that most people do their shopping online. And we saw from the responses to the survey of the Chamber of Commerce, the written responses, that it said that most of the responses said that there is always parking available if one is willing to walk one block to get there. That people are attracted to the town center by the outdoor dining, that people shop at retailers after they go to outdoor dining. And the data from everywhere else, it's not just Winchester, but you go to Belmont, you go to Rockport, you go to Boston, you go to any other community that has opened up the streets to bring people to walk on the streets and to, to be more present out there. The retailers do better. So I think December 1st may like the, the owner of Lucia here asked for, to me, makes sense. But, you know, if the sense of the board is that it should be earlier than that, then just extending it however much we can will help everybody. And I'm in favor of extending it.
Mariano, I invite you to come on to our Friday morning calls with, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and hear from retailers. I had a two-hour meeting this morning about what we're looking to do for the holidays to support our retailers and also our restaurants, too. Had some great conversations with some of our owners about what we can do in December to really support them and support the other businesses. So, you know, happy to have you join us on those Friday calls so you can hear from them directly.
Mike, you have your hand up.
Yeah, the, thanks Susan. I would just say that, you know, we've got about 100 meetings between now and November 15th. I mean, we can always extend it further if it seems like we need to. But, you know, and I say the 15th just because I think ending it on a Sunday, I think, was kind of problematic for us in the past with, you know, the end of a weekend and restaurants not having a lot of staff and being able to, to move equipment. So maybe, you know, if we say extend it to, you know, 5:00 PM on Monday, November 15th, maybe, maybe that, that will work for us. I don't know if that's a good compromise.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking in terms of before Thanksgiving, you know, extend it somewhat because obviously the weather is working for us. But it could turn and I think, I think Mike is right, it's not going to be easy to, to break down some of the, some of the stuff that the restaurants have installed, partly just to make it look nicer and to be more permanent looking. So, yeah, I think I'd be more comfortable with the 15th of November.
Okay, so I move that we extend the outdoor dining in Winchester for the restaurants that are existing, have existing permits to 5:00 PM on Monday, November 15th.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Hope they can work with that. I think, I think that, that should help.
Well, send a letter to the six folks who have outdoor dining spaces, I'll order them to the extension. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. So now we have the, I was going to say, I was just looking at the appointments, but I don't think anyone is here for the appointments. So why don't we just go ahead with the, the town meeting warrant? We have some articles and motions we have to work through. Beth, you have a list, right? And we have a list as well.
Yeah, so Mark, do you want me to put up the motions?
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. I think that basically we're focusing on the articles that are sponsored by the board this evening. And ideally we'll get a motion voted for each of the articles that Beth is going to put up on the screen here, so.
Everybody see that, okay?
Yeah, I can see it. I can see it.
Yep.
It's pretty straightforward. The article is directly out of the warrant. And in this particular case, the motion is very straightforward. It's as printed in the warrant. Then we have a, a background that, actually, this one was drafted by Susan. That gives the little information about what the purposes of the article. So I don't know if you want to vote these as we go, Susan, or did you want to do them at the end or?
Why don't we, it's going to be a lot of roll calls, but maybe we should just do each one.
I move that we recommend favorable action on Article 7.
Second.
Just a question, we're, we're moving to place this on the ballot or to write it on the, place it on the, on the motion or just the wording or? I'm, I'm just, I just don't remember how we did this before.
What you're, what we've highlighted here is the actual, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but that's the actual motion that requires the select board's vote tonight.
So we're voting to approve, to approve the motion or?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I'll, I'll take the, the motion that was made as, as, as doing that. I just wanted to be clear. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Susan, as we're going through these, do you want to talk about the assigned board member?
Oh, good point. We could do that at the same time. This is something I think I would like to present and talk about. It's something I worked on last, for last time. And the, the town clerk has been working with me and meeting with the schools. So I'd, I'd be happy to go ahead and present on Article 7.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is getting authorization from the town meeting for the conservation commission to manage the town forest. That was a vote of the select board back, I believe, a couple of months ago. And David Miller was nice enough to draft the background for us, so.
So I move that we approve the motion as printed and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then, Mariano, would you like to present this since you've been working with CONCOM?
Sure.
Okay, great. Hope that's okay with everyone. Article 9.
This is the Washington Street, Swanton Street parcel article. And Nina is with us and I believe he's going to walk us through the motion. If we could put the motion up on the screen, that would be great.
I'll stop sharing, Patty. I think you have the motion to put up.
Yeah, this one gets a little technical, so we should probably have it in front of us. Alright, so this, this involves taking by eminent domain the property at Washington and Swanton. And really solely for the purpose of then ensuring that there, there is affordable housing built on there, optimally by a private developer. So the town is looking to take title to this or own this for a short time. Just the purposes of starting a mixed income, affordable, maybe mixed use, but definitely affordable housing, affordable to arrange, we hope, of buyers as soon as we can possibly make that happen.
Yes, so Susan, I can, I can walk us through this. It, it seems like a lot in here, but that's partly a result of what happens with an eminent domain vote or really a property vote. So, you know, the, the beginning of this, I'll actually try to break it up into as many pieces as I can here. First, pursuant, you see the, it says of the authorization granted pursuant to Article 12 of Fall 2020 Annual Town Meeting. As everyone might recall, the town, town meeting voted to authorize the select board are ready to, to take this particular property, the Washington and Swan Street property by eminent domain. The, the reason to come back is now a little bit further along. We have an appraisal. And so if you skip down to the dollar sign there, the 5.3 million, that's, that's the change from last time in, in terms of how much is needed to be able to take it by eminent domain. The language, very important, is that an amount not to exceed that be appropriated for the costs and that borrowing be authorized for that. So the next 5.3 just essentially repeats it, but it's, it's essentially magic language to be authorized to borrow up to that amount. That does not prohibit the select board from offsetting that amount and borrowing less if you have other funds that don't need to, that are available to you without appropriation. For instance, donations, gifts, grant funding, federal, state, local grants, et cetera. So all of that can happen to offset it, but that's the maximum borrowing that would be allowed, 5.3. The remaining language about Chapter 44, Section 20, is even more magical bond borrowing language that is now sort of standard for all of your borrowing language. And then if you go all the way down to the and further, which is, I appreciate the highlighting, the and further, select board be authorized to sell or lease a portion of the property. That is the authority to do what, what you just mentioned, Susan. Effectually, it's sort of the intent to not just acquire the property, but to then be able to dispose of it to an affordable housing developer through an RFP process for, for development then.
So if, if there are no questions, I, I move that we approve the motion language as presented. That town, that, sorry, that bond council review it and that we authorize the chair to approve bond council changes. And that we recommend favorable action on this motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Mark, for all your work on that one.
Yep, no problem.
And then the next question is, is who is going to present on this one?
I'm happy to present, Susan. You know, I, you know, been working on it for, for a while, so. And I think we initially presented on it, so I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, you and I did it the first time. How would it be if we did that again, only with, working with Wind Cam a little more smoothly?
Yeah, I would love to do that. I think that's great. I mean, and certainly, you know, feel free to, to lead the way or,
alright.
You know, but I would look forward to that, so.
I mean, I think, Mike, you're going to have two pretty big ones, right? With the capital request for the transfer station and for the special legislation for the conservation, right?
Yeah, those are, those are, are pretty much done at this point, so.
So I think it makes sense if Susan leads on Article 9.
Okay. I mean, we want to provide, yeah, we're going to work on it. We're, we want to, we want to have a united front on this one. This is a big one, so, yeah.
Happy to let Susan take the lead though, but, you know, it's a, it, it is a little bit, you know, cumbersome. I mean, you know, Susan and I in that last presentation, I mean, it was, it was a little bit crazy, so. That, unfortunately, the, the weekend before that we were working on it, it was like, you know, 75 degrees in, you know, November and we were kind of stuck with the details of it, so.
Yeah, I know.
But happy to do it again, so.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Want me to continue?
Yes.
Okay, Article 14 is the transfer station article. This motion would authorize a borrowing of $5.5 million and the use of $1 million in free cash. And this has been drafted by one council.
So I move that we approve, approve the motion as printed and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. This one also has taken a lot of work, so thank you everyone on this one. Mike, this is, you know, this is one that you, you know, shepherded through, you and Mark, working with capital and, you know, working with the DPW and engineers, so why don't you present on this one? You could, you know, you'd be better, better able to answer the questions, too. Thanks.
Susan, can I, sorry to interrupt. This is not at all major, but just so folks aren't surprised. At the end of the day, when these all go in the motions book, one thing that Mark, Too Good and Jen and I and Beth will do is kind of make sure everything's in the same form. So you may see little things changed here with, with the bond council's permission about, you know, which order general laws and stuff are in. So as you approve these, just keep that in mind, as for those, because Rich, I believe this might be your first time going through this as well, so I want to remind that.
Thanks, Mina.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 15 is our Uber receipt, which, as you can see, is about $4,100 and staff is recommending it be applied to the Waterfield Road Church Street Traffic Improvement Project.
So I move that we approve the Article 15 motion as printed and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And this is on a consent agenda?
Yes, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So, next one is 19, which is our contribution towards the MBTA project. The motion is for $315,000 from free cash to meet the town's requirement. Previously, I believe it was $240,000 had been appropriated for this purpose.
So Mark and I did speak with the folks from the MBTA on Friday and this 315 number includes the costs for the additional work regarding the salvage stone for that increased cost in their bid as well as the irrigation piece. That was not included in the T's bid, but they have agreed to hold the price of the $65,000 that the town was quoted prior to the bid.
Sounds good. I mean, this is basically because their, their whole project came in over, over the budget.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And they were 15% over budget overall.
Yeah.
The good news is they were able to find the money and they expect to award the contract. We have a project, which is, after many, many years of effort, a very, very good news.
Yes, that is, okay.
Beth, is it, I'm just, is it to increase it by 315,000 or 315,000 total?
So we already appropriated 240,000 at, Mark, was it last Fall Town Meeting, I think?
Yeah, right.
So this, and that was based on the engineer's estimate for the work that the town, extra work the town had requested. And when it went out to bid, it came in substantially higher, specifically the salvage stone work. And so this 315 is to make up the difference between that.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Yep.
So I remember the bid came in much higher than 315, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I move that we approve the motion for Article 19 as printed and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Is this on the consent agenda?
No.
No, no.
No.
Susan, I, I'd volunteer to take this.
Okay, I was just thinking, this might be something, it's downtown and. Okay, I was just thinking, this might be something, it's downtown and, yeah, that'd be good. Thanks.
Rich, I'm happy to work with you to put together some presentation materials if you'd like.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay.
Article 20 is a consent agenda item. It's to appropriate $70,000 for the ever source engineering work, and that's, I believe, fully reimbursable, Beth. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So I move that we approve the Article 20 motion language as printed and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The consent agenda one.
Agenda, yeah.
Uh, I was just gonna move it. Uh, I move that we approve the Article 21 motion language as printed and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes, too.
I just wanted to mention on Article 21, this is probably the first of a few of these that we'll see. Those mitigation payments trickle in as the scheduled milestones are met. So we only have this first $10,000, but we thought it'd be good for town meeting to kind of see. But there's some progress being made and we expect to have some additional money in previous or future town meetings.
Right, and the, the background explains how there, you know, further payments and we'll get, you know, a good amount of money at the end.
So Article 24 also consent agenda. There's two motions. One motion is for the traffic mitigation payment, which was $275,000, which has been received by the town. We also received the payment for $20,965 for sewer system improvements. It was part of the ZBA decision, so.
This is part of the River Street project?
I'm sorry, River Street, yeah.
Okay.
And these are paid, or have already been paid by the developer, and if we don't appropriate them, they go back to the developer, the money, right?
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
So I move that we approve Article 24, Motion 1, and Article 24, Motion 2, as printed and that we recommend favorable action on both.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Great. 25 is the Northeast Vocational School.
Right.
Susan, did you want to cover this one, or?
Yeah, I think so. This is the vocational technical high school that our town is part of. There's a group of, I think, 12 communities. So it's a, building is around the same era as the, our high school, our old high school was. And it is really in need of complete repair, complete replacement. And there's a building committee and they've been working for the MSBA process. And they're now at the point where they're asking for the 12 towns to approve the project and the, and the cost of the project. And there is an additional sense of urgency around this because they also worked very hard and lobbied the legislature for a higher reimbursement rate, higher state reimbursement, which is tied to ARPA money and was authorized in the budget, this year's budget. So they're concerned that it will not be available past the end of the year. So they're looking for us to approve it at town meeting. Winchester has, I think, the smallest share of this enormous cost. So seems to me it's an opportunity to, you know, keep our own costs down and also lessen the impact on the other 11 communities, so. That's what all this talks about. It's the MSBA's sort of blessed, you know, special language that we, we've seen before when we do school projects as well.
It's the, yeah. Is the 79.67% reimbursement from the MSBA the largest percentage that they've ever approved?
I think it's a few hundredths percentage points below the maximum, so, yeah, it's pretty high.
Yeah. So unless there are questions, I move that we approve the Article 25 motion language as printed and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And I volunteer to do the presentation on this.
Okay.
Once I straighten out the numbers with the building committee, which I will do.
26 is the multipurpose sports court at the Mystic School. The motion is for $25,000 for design services from free cash. Beth and I had met with Nick as well as Meg. And after quite a discussion, we came to the conclusion our, our recommendation would be to just recommend design money at this point and come back to the Springtown Meeting for construction dollars when we have better cost estimates on the project. So we're looking for the board's approval to change what had previously been voted, which I believe was a motion to, to do both design and construction, so.
Do you want us to change the motion to do a revised motion? As a select board motion now, or?
Beth and I just wanted to make sure that the board, there was a vote earlier taken for design and construction. And our recommendation is that we only pursue the design funding at, at this town meeting, so.
Okay.
We wanted to make sure the board was okay with that.
Would we put the construction on the capital queue, or would we, are we thinking of coming back for free cash or other sources of funding?
Beth and I haven't discussed that. I, I would recommend that we handle it the same way, Mariano, that we've handled this. A separate warrant article and, and use free cash, which is what we were going to do at this town meeting. It's just that we
Yeah.
We're being a little conservative, I know, but we want to make sure we have good cost estimates, so.
Yeah, I think it doesn't change the, the intent of the board's original vote, which was to find, fund the design and construction from free cash. It's just spreading it out over two town meeting periods, so we can make sure we have a good number for construction.
I'm just a little concerned if, if we wait till Springtown Meeting, you know, we're, we're kind of missing the construction period of time where, you know, I mean, this is not a building, it's a sport court. I mean, you know, we, I feel like we should at least be able to, to fund it out of free cash and get it moving, so kids can be there in the spring.
Yeah, so we talked about schedule, Mark and Meg and Nick and I met to discuss this. And we didn't think that waiting to get the construction funding in the spring would make too much of a difference. So there'll be enough design work between now and Springtown Meeting that we wouldn't be stopping, slowing anything down as it was. And construction would likely be be towards next spring or summer, anyway.
Enough.
I, I don't think the construction would take that long. It's not like a build, it's a sports court, so, yeah. So I'm okay with that.
So I move that we approve the Article 26 motion language sprinted and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
I guess we need a presentation for this one, a little presentation?
Yes.
I, I can do that as well, Susan, if you want.
Yeah, that's fine with me, unless, Mariano, did you, were you?
No, that's fine. I mean, if Rich wants it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. So the next one is 29, which is the sustainability fee, special legislation. Motion's fairly straightforward. We're basically voting what's already printed in the warrant. There aren't any questions. The background didn't make it into the materials here, but Mike has drafted the background. So it will, it will be in there as of tomorrow, anyway, so.
And, and Mina's okay with all the, I mean, he may, he probably drafted this, right? This is.
Yes, this came from Mina. I believe it's pretty much the same language that went to last Springtown Meeting.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. The, the only distinction was the amendment made at town meeting, which, which was calculated through here.
Right, okay.
So I, I mean, I move the, that we approve the Article 29 motion language sprinted and that we recommend favorable action.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
31 is a, is a select board article, but it's a standard article for creating or dissolving committees. And we actually had a motion, this hasn't happened, I haven't seen this in years, but town meeting member has actually put forward a motion so it could be included in the motion background book that gets distributed. So this particular motion was put forward by Carol Savage, town meeting member. And to Communication, the Study Committee.
Yeah, I, I seem to recall this kind of thing happening on the floor, but since we don't have in-person meetings and maybe, maybe that's, you know, she's just being very prepared.
Yeah.
So she, yeah, go ahead.
We don't need to vote to approve the motion, right? We're just voting whether we recommend favorable action or not?
Correct, that's, that's right, Mariano.
So I move that, sorry, Susan.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm fine with, with this. I think it's a good idea. It looks, you know, I think it's, it's, it'll be simpler than the, the write-up would lead you to believe. I think it's, it'll be a good committee. Go ahead.
I move that we recommend favorable action on art, on the Article 21 motion that was submitted by town meeting member Carol Savage.
A second, just a quick change, Article 31, I think he said 21.
Oh, I'm sorry, Article 30.
Any, any discussion? And I think I heard a second. That was a second, right, Mike?
That was a second also, yeah.
Okay, roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Is that it?
Thank, thank you, yeah.
We did want to talk about Article 23, which was not a select board sponsored article, but was a Board of Health slash Town Manager sponsored article.
The COVID expenses?
Yeah, so there, there was a request to see if the town would transfer free cash to cover COVID-related expenses for the Board of Health. Mark and I met with Jen last week and she estimates she has about $150,000 of COVID-related expenses through the end of the fiscal year, so through June of 2022. So it's, it's testing, it's some additional contact tracing, it's somewhat, I have a list here, not in front of me. So after Mark and I discussed it, our recommendation is that all of the, all of the items that she listed as requests are, are eligible funds. And so our recommendation is that, that the board prioritize this after town meeting for funding through the ARPA money, as opposed to going to town meeting to request free cash. Because there is obviously another funding source rather than free cash to be able to fund this at this point. So our recommendation is that we indefinitely postpone it and, and reconvene after town meeting for the ARPA funding instead.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, no, I agree. Do we need to vote on this?
You don't need to vote. It's, it's a Board of Health Town Manager sponsored article, so you don't have to vote on it. We just want to make sure that, because we're kind of, by taking it off, we're promising ARPA funds in its place. So I just want to make sure that everybody's kind of on board with that as we, before we indefinitely postpone it.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, thank you.
What ARPA is for, okay. So we have an appointment of to the zoning board of appeals. Bob Tedesco graciously volunteered to move from being an alternate to being a regular member, full-time position. So why don't we vote?
Yeah, this is a board that we always have a hard time getting enough people. It's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of very technical work and so we appreciate when anybody wants to serve there. So I move that we appoint Bob Tedesco from his current alternate member to being a regular member to a term to expire March 31st, 2023, on the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And thank you to Bob Tedesco.
Susan, can I just ask, so?
Yes.
Where we stand with this board right now, we have two permanent members and one alternate member. Is that?
No, what we have now is three permanent members, but one of those permanent members is ready to leave. And one alternate member. So this is a chance for me to put out a call for anyone who's listening, that we need another few more volunteers for the Board of Appeals.
So, so Patty, are we looking for one full-time member?
No, we're looking for two full-time members now, because, um, so Mark Regan, Kevin Sarny, and Mark Waterbury have all stepped down. And then David Bay has also stepped down as an alternate. So we still have, we still, you need, they were already short, so you need five full-time members. So you need, we need two more full-time members and two more alternate members.
And there's one, and there's additionally one other person who's looking to leave, so technically, if we could find three full-time members.
Yes.
Okay.
Work your magic.
Yeah.
Usually we, we roll them in on the, to the alternate members, though, and then we kind of push them into the full-time member, you know, position, so. But I, I do think it's worthwhile for us to have a conversation about the demands of the zoning board on those members. I know in other communities I practice, they put the decision writing on the attorneys that are representing the parties instead of the members of the ZBA. It's a, it's a ton of work. It's very technical. And we, you know, probably it's a good time for us to consider some changes in the practice of ZBA, because we're just, we're burning through a lot of, like, really strong volunteers and, you know, it's just, it's the nature of the high level of activity in Winchester, so.
You had appointed another gentleman this summer, and unfortunately, he was also on the Personnel Board. And on the Personnel Board, you can't be on other committees. And he chose to stay on the Personnel Board.
The other thing we could consider doing is advertising. I think the town clerk has a bit of a budget for putting ads in the, you know, Daily Times Chronicle and so forth. And I don't think that we've ever done that out of the town manager's office.
No, we haven't.
I, I think that might, that might be helpful. As well as people, you know, talking, talking this up. But I think that would be helpful, since we're all here, we could. And we have a different town manager who might consider doing that, you know, it's just something that we just never tried.
And. Sorry, what was I gonna say? Maybe explore, maybe Lawyers Weekly or something like that.
Oh.
As a publication, might be.
Can you, can you fill, fill the town manager in on that?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I've heard of Lawyers Weekly, but, you know, I don't get it, so just how much it costs and, you know, that's the logistics of doing that.
And Patty, the application process is still open, right, on, online?
Yes, I've actually put it on and as, there's no deadline. It just says until position's filled.
Rolling initiative.
Yes, I don't have a stop date on it at all.
Yeah.
Which enabled us to actually appoint Bob tonight. Which enabled us to actually appoint Bob tonight.
That's, that's a good, that's a good idea, too. Thank you for doing that. Yep. Okay. Thank, thank you. Any further ideas? We'll consider.
So I, I think we should have the town manager work with that town council to figure out what Mike mentioned about changing. So if town council can look at what other towns are doing and see if there's a best practice to reduce the, the work and if we can bring a a warrant article to Springtown meeting.
If need be, yeah.
Yeah, to do that.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. We do have a consent agenda.
I move that we.
Questions? No, go ahead. I'm so slow. I'm sorry.
Well, sorry. I'm just trying to.
Trying to give everybody a chance.
Just trying to end before 9:30.
Yes.
I just want to highlight, highlight on the consent agenda that Veterans Day Parade is back on for November 11. Nice return.
Yes.
So I move that we, that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So here we are. I believe we can just adjourn. We don't have to do anything further in our executive session that we started out with. I'm.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you all. Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, everyone.
Mina?
Mike?
Take care.
Everybody.